Good evening, everyone. My name is Sylvia Collier and it's my pleasure to welcome you on 125 Live from the Bay Board Council Number 1. Today we have Andy Hemingway, Patrick Keen, and Dan Zapita, and also two moderators, moderators Laura Lee from ABC Six News and Randy Peterson for Post Bulletin.
Welcome to this year's City Council Debates. We are hosting a number of debates this month, and today's is Rochester City Council Ward One. Again, as Sylvia just mentioned, we want to thank all of our partners in this 125 Live for allowing us to use this space, and our partners, Post Bulletin, my co-moderator, Randy Peterson. Before we get started, we want to go over some of the rules at this debate. We will be having this debate for 30 minutes. It is timed, and we are doing that on purpose so that there's fairness to the questions and to allow the candidates to be able to answer in a timely manner. We ask that the audience members do not record this debate. We will have this livestream right now, and it's provided on our website at kaaltv.com. We will also have coverage of this coming up tonight at 10 o'clock as well. The rules of this debate: Each candidate will start with a minute response per question. Before we got started, we drew numbers, and the candidates drew an order in which they will respond. Dan Zapita will start as number one, Andy Hemingway, two, and Patrick Keen, number three. Randy and I did order the questions already, so they will change orders as we go, and we will then address each candidate per question. Again, each candidate will be given one minute for response. They have paddle boards with two opportunities for rebuttal during the 30-minute debate, meaning they will only have an opportunity to rebuttal twice. And they can wave their paddle in the air to allow Randy and myself to be notified, as well as our executive producer, Jenny Hens, to be notified that they have a rebuttal to a question. At the end, each candidate will then also have an opportunity for a one-minute final statement. At that point, once they're all done, we will then close this debate. So let's get started. Randy?
All right. And as we've mentioned, welcome candidates. We'll start with the first question, and it'll go first to Dan Zapita. Does Rochester Police Department have enough officers and resources to support the city's public safety needs? And if not, how should the city plan to meet those needs?
I do not believe that the Rochester Police Department has enough resources and officers. I think that that does need to be beefed up quite a bit. So how do we address that? Well, I think that we need to take a look at what the budget looks like, if cuts need to be made in other places or whatever. But I do believe that we need to build that up, so.
Thank you. And second answer to that question, Andy Hemingway.
As of now, I know there's around 150 officers, registered officers, who are voted in, and 66 citizens for citizen supporters. And right now, about 58% of the general funds are going to the police and to other public safety groups, the fire and so forth. So I think it is staffed well, but it could be staffed better. And I know right now the application process is down. I believe about 100 and some less were brought in from previous times. So I think they could work and discuss with the county and Kevin Torgensen and some of those and the chief officer and communicate on ways to staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then Patrick Keen, same question.
Yeah, again, the police have come to the City Council about three times for major budget changes in the last four years, and all of them have been approved. The police, budget-wise, what they want to be staffed at has been approved. The problem in the last couple of years is they cannot staff to those levels. And I think we've made really good progress. I think we're closing in on being fully staffed on sworn officers and also on other parts of it. Our police department, you know, has gone through major changes. About five years ago, we had a new police chief, and there's been some, like, big 21st Century policing sort of processes going in there. There's good community outreach right now. There's Safe City Nights going on less than a mile away. There's really good outreach with the police. I think we have a good police-community interaction now, much better than some of the bigger cities. And I think when we close these staffing gaps, I think we'll be in good shape.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Our second question is, what do you see as a city's role in supporting efforts to create more affordable housing? And this question, we're going to start with Andy Hemingway.
Right now, I know with the coming of the new voting season in November, the referendum, the tax, extra tax of 0.5% is due for voting. They do have an allowance in that to help with affordable housing. I know there's about 6,000 homes that need to be built, and they're at about 60% capacity to do that going into the 2030 Max Field Study. They could use, with that, and some funding from some TIF funding, tax-incremented funding, find some property that's dilapidated and work with those two resources. The Rochester Builders Association and some of the people there can come out and have a core meeting. I think the big thing is the seniors and the people that have an average income between the 50% average median income and less are struggling to find affordable homes. So, yeah, thank you.
Same question for Patrick. You're next.
Yeah, affordable housing is a daunting problem. And in most cities like ours that are growing, that have a good vibrant economy, it's been priced out of most people's range to own and even more recently even to rent. I've spent about two years representing the city on the Housing Coalition, which is a collaboration between Rochesteri Foundation, the county and the city, and others, builders included, to try to say, how do you go towards this? I think the way it's really being addressed is by chipping away. There's no one big solution where we're going to fix the affordable housing. Or, as Andy alludes to, it's not just an affordable housing, it's a housing problem. We haven't been building houses enough to support the growth that we need for our economy. I think those sort of collaborations and support for things like our faith community, they're off doing projects like Bear Creek Community and the county doing other sort of housing. We're going to make small inroads, and that's the way these solutions come about.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Let's finish off. The same question with Dan Zapita before we start rebuttals.
This question is actually near and dear to my heart. I resigned back in April from Community Corrections. One of our main priorities there was to help guys coming out of prison find affordable housing. I am currently working for an organization that is working with a state program called Housing Stabilization Services. And in that, what I do is I help people find housing, and then I also help them stay there. I help them sustain that housing. So I think that this is a topic that definitely needs to be addressed. As Patrick pointed out, this is a daunting topic, and this will take a lot of time to work on.
All right, thank you. Our rebuttal with Andy.
Yeah, I just want to add on to what Pat said. I do agree with him completely, but to build on it a little bit, there's everywhere employment. There's a contract shortage, just issues getting stuff down the pipeline to even build these houses. So I think we need to try and figure out how some recruiting strategies for the city with contractors and get some young people into the industry to start building homes. I think that's probably an issue, too, that could be worked on, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. And next question. What do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure for capital improvement projects in the city? And we'll start with Patrick Keen.
So when usually addressing those, it's usually the stuff right on the horizon. But my view is the transportation project that we're working on, the Link Bus Rapid Transit, that started probably in 2016, 2017, and it probably won't be running until about 2025. That is the biggest capital improvement project going on in the city. Part of, one thing I did as part of City Council, I got on this National League of Cities federal transportation thing, so to make sure we protect the grants we're trying to get to make this happen. This is the link that'll run Bus Rapid Transit from Second Street West into, by St. Mary's Downtown and around. It is $134 million project. It is not paid for by city. It's paid for by federal and DMC money, but we're going to have to run it, and that's why we have to stand top of it.
Thank you. And next, Dan Zapita, same question. What do you see as the most pressing need for capital improvement projects in the city?
I would say that busing is definitely one of those at the top of the list. Again, just with the guys that I work with, the busing system itself, it's very difficult to navigate. It's very difficult to get around. It takes a very long time to get around. Oftentimes, you're going from one end of the city to the other, you're stuck in the middle for an hour waiting for the next bus to come along. Apart from that, I think that the roads, I think that our roads need to be better. So I think we need to work on those as well.
And next to Andy Hemingway.
Thank you. Yeah, from that standpoint, I think Rochester has over 3 million visitors a year. There's about 30,000 commuters that come into Rochester on a daily basis. That flexes a little bit with COVID, but I agree, Dave, that the roads are a big thing. There's over 100 miles of roads within the Rochester area that haven't had any work done in 50 years. A lot of them are in good condition, but we expect the commuters and the people and the population to continuously increase and build. And with the urbanization, people moving into Rochester, there's more traffic flow. So I believe the roads are a big issue. Transportation and then on the commuting, alternative transportation, through commuting through the trails, bike systems, using the bike paths, alternative transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have a rebuttal from Patrick Keen.
Yeah, I just want to add, I probably heard the question as the biggest capital project, which I think I answered. But I think when you talk about the most pressing, I think there are some things going on right now with both stormwater management and roads that we're trying to address through the sales tax, and we're working with our state partners. I think those are two that are more pressing and more visible or more impact to the average citizen.
All right. The next question. What would be your chief priority when making decisions about future city budgets? Again, what would be your chief priority when making decisions about future city budgets? And we're going to start this one with Dan Zapita.
Quite honestly, I think we need to cut the budget. I think we need to spend better, and I think we need to spend more wisely. It seems like a lot of money is being spent, you know, you take a look at the DMC and whatever. I mean, that is a great program, and it's doing the city a lot of good. But in more recent years, the spending seems to have gotten out of control. And as such, a lot of the people in the community just seem to be lost. They're confused. They don't know what exactly is really going on with the DMC. Cutting taxes, taxes need to be cut. I mean, we all, all of us as citizens in Rochester, when we come across spending, we have to cut out what we, the frivolous stuff that we don't need to spend money on. Therefore, we need to cut spending.
Thank you, Dan. Our next, for the same question. What would be your chief priority when making decisions about future city budgets? Patrick Keen?
Thank you. Yeah, when I think of the budgets, again, I think of, you know, we approved a, like, close to a $400 million budget, but there's about $94 million of that that is city levy. That's against property tax levy. We get a lot of our other budget money through things like DMC, federal grants, aid to cities. I feel I want to be very much a fiscal conservative when dealing with the levy and making sure we manage our local property taxes very closely. The flip side is when it gets into things like, should we compete for federal grants? Or should we try to get money from the state to do things like bike trails? I want us to be trying to get as much of that as we can and bring it to our community. And that really has been our focus. It has been, I'll even call it unacceptable, the amount between the property values going up and the cost of living in Rochester has gone up, and I think we need to work to stabilize that.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Andy, let's have you finish off that question. Same question.
Obviously, it would be staying within the budget. The budget is fluid. It's set by the City Council. It does come from, the portion of it comes from property taxes. Like Pat said, a portion comes from applications, for building applications, from the parking ramps. I mean, all that money comes, and the City Council gets part of that, and that's what we use to build and to do the things that we do. Part of it comes from the incremented tax, the 0.5% tax that, again, is coming up in November for approval. All that comes into the budget, and, you know, depending on how many people come into Rochester, depends on how much a person makes. Mayo Civic, money comes in from the Mayo Civic. And so it is fluid, and so we can work from that. But as long as we stay within the constraints of the budgets that's set, I think we're doing good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Next question. What one aspect of city government do you believe needs added attention? And we'll start with Andy Hemingway.
The one thing that probably everyone can agree on is housing. Housing is a big thing, especially, I have elder parents and a lot of parents and people in my neighborhood. And Pat can attest to this, he lives in the same neighborhood. But a lot of people are older and struggle. We had two people on our block who waited six months to find housing because they couldn't get in anywhere, and they struggled to keep their house up and do things. And so affordable housing for seniors, just to get them in somewhere where they can feel safe and have networked. So, community for them, they feel safer when they're there. And for the middle-class, single-family, making $50,000 a year, refurbished homes or small houses that are modestly built. So, thank you.
Okay. Same question to Dan Zapita. What aspects of city government do you believe needs added attention?
I would say more attention to the Community Corrections that are in work in Rochester, in Olmsted County. Having worked with them for many years, the guys coming out of jails, prisons, these kinds of things, they need a break and they need some help. And there are some really good programs out there, but I think we can do better.
Thank you. And then Patrick Keen, same question. What one aspect of city government do you believe needs added attention?
So one of the things I ran on last time, and again, I've spent a lot of time on resident advocacy, people that have trouble, like, working with the city. It might be that somebody came onto their property to remove an ash tree, and they're upset about it, and they don't know how to reach out and talk to the city. And I just find, I'll call it government responsiveness or how to work with the government. Because there's some cases, I dealt with a person moving into a new home, you know, young couple, and the first thing they got was like a tall grass bill, like, for $400 from when the house was being built. And they were upset that they got this, and they were nine months late on it because they never got the mail, because there was no address to send it to. And I worked through with this on it, but it is difficult when you have an issue with the city and who to talk to, how to get response back. And so to answer your question, I think it's government responsiveness. We need to get to be more like problem, like, resolution-oriented.
Thank you.
All right, candidates. Our next question. When it comes to, and many of you touched on this as a big priority for your campaign, when it comes to access to public transportation, should people have access to public transportation at no cost in the city? We're going to start with Patrick Keen on this one.
All right, this is timely, because we are working through right now on the Link Rapid Transit, and that is one of the questions in front of us. In our community, commuting, we have a major employer, and they are the majority of the commuting. And there is a work in process between the city and DMC and Mayo to say this exact question. Would we be better off charging everybody some fee and Mayo paying it and then getting it to the city, or should we go to a zero fee? And this is specifically on Bus Rapid Transit. I've come around, I've changed my position on this a little bit, that I'd like to see it go cost-free, because I think we have a way underutilized asset, and this is a way to get better utilization on it. It's a different question when you start looking at our other bus routes all through the city, because in that case, there are some federal grants we get that we say we must have fee, and we can't just have it for free and still get their money. So we've got to work those things out.
Patrick, thank you. Our next candidate to answer this is Andy Zapita. Or Andy, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Andy Hemingway. The question is, when it comes to access to public transportation, should people have access to public transportation at no cost?
I would have to disagree. I would say at least at low cost, something across the board. I mean, you don't go to New York, you don't go to Chicago, you don't go to any other city and have free transportation. I think low cost, something even $5 a month. I know the electric buses that they just released, some of those are very expensive pieces of equipment, much more expensive to maintain than the regular fuel bus. And I believe that a majority of the population in Rochester, I mean, we've got a great path system, and they're in their 40s, they're in their 30s. Granted, a lot of people come from out of Rochester to commute, but, I mean, there's bicycle transportation, the bikes, there's a lot of other modes of transportation that they could have, talk to many people, and if they had more parking for bicycles at the major Mayo facilities around there, they would utilize a bicycle or like a green scooter, Lime scooter-type device. Thank you.
Andy, thank you. And Dan, we'll follow up with you to finish out this question. When it comes to access to public transportation, should people have access to public transportation at no cost?
I don't believe that they should. I think that people should pay their own way. I think that there are programs out there. There are Mayo and other organizations that step up and will offer some sort of subsidy and that kind of thing. But by and large, I think people should, I mean, people are already budgeting for that. I mean, having been low-income myself for many, many years, that was one of the things I budgeted for, was taking the bus. And so, yeah, people need to be responsible for themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then let's turn to what the city's looking at potentially for parking on residential streets. Would you support or be in favor of keeping the cities or changing the city's permit parking program? We'll start with Dan Zapita.
I think that, changing it, I think that, I understand the need for permit, because especially around Mayo, parking is a very difficult issue. But nonetheless, I mean, you go visit a friend who happens to live in that area, and you're hard-pressed to find a place to park. So I think that some changes need to be done with that. What exactly those changes are, I'm not exactly sure right now, but that's definitely something that needs to be taken a look at.
Okay, thank you. And Andy Hemingway?
I guess I would say that I think that it would be a reasonable thing, especially around some of the high schools downtown Mayo. I know there's a lot of people that struggle during the school year because of parking from students on streets, and then with the city coming around to plow, and they having alternating parking, some of the vehicles have a hard time getting around those cars, and that's a struggle for the city and the cost that goes into that. And then downtown accessibility, yes, is an issue, and I think those residents should have priorities over the people that are employed downtown, that the ramps and some of those other things where off-site parking. Mayo does have all the buses that people can commute on right now from those outside parking areas. So I would be for it. Thank you.
And Patrick Keen?
So a lot of our residential parking programs come from the neighbors saying that they don't want all these commuters parking in their neighborhood. And again, I want to, I think that's a form of local control of their neighborhoods. The policy problem is that these are public streets, and if somebody wants to park on them, we shouldn't be stopping them, and I think it's a valid debate. At the same time, I come down right now on the side of continuous improvement, like, we're probably not going to do the ones around the high schools anymore because we don't need them. The high schools went to free parking. We're going to look at some of the other ones that end up being empty all day and saying, do we have this, too much control here? So we're looking to improve them, but I think in general, I like the idea of having residential parking where the people who live in a neighborhood have some control about their streets when they're gone during the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have time for one more question before final statements tonight. This final question is, we are here at 125 Live's facilities. What do you think the city should do to meet the needs of our aging community? And we're going to start this one with Andy Hemingway.
Well, I just want to say Sylvia, and this place is amazing. I became a member here when the Y closed, and they do a fabulous job. And I've resourced many people here, including my parents, but they have travel issues like a lot of seniors. So I think part of it is just to network and make sure they do not stay isolated in their homes. Again, that comes with the affordable housing issue, where they could potentially have more of a community with other seniors. So I think that's two things, the affordable housing for them, and then to branch out from here and maybe have a small 125 version at another part of the city, or have a shuttle for access to here for people that can't come. I mean, there's lots of options out there in that respect, so thank you.
Thank you. The next to answer the question is Patrick Keen. Same question. What do you think the city should do to meet the needs of our aging community?
So we have a couple of groups, and one of them, Commissioner Greg Wright, our county commissioner, has spent a lot of time on this with the AARP as far as what things communities can do. And I guess I want to distinguish a little bit the difference between those low-income or at-risk and just seniors in general, because there are different sort of problems. In that housing study we mentioned, one of the key problems right now is not enough housing for seniors. And that can be, that's a combination of, like, you know, the homestead type of places, but also those like patio homes. So there's a lot of those types of things. As far as, like, city support, if you look at where the senior center came from when it was down at the castle, it was a federal program back in the 70s, and all that money has disappeared. And now the city has this partnership, and it's a partnership with 125 to run this space. And again, I think it's a good service for our seniors, and I'd like to see more access to those who can't afford things, too, and not just be these for-pay services.
Thank you. And then Dan Zapita, same question.
I think it's very simple. Spend time with them. As a community, we need to be reaching out to our elderly. There is so much wisdom we can gain from our elderly population. There is nothing new under the sun, and these guys, these people have seen it all, and we could learn a lot from them. Spending time with them, and maybe the city could help create, I know that there are some churches and other organizations who are creating programs that will allow people to do that. Maybe they go in and they read a story, or they sing some songs, and maybe the city can help create some avenues for that as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, and we'll offer a minute for each of you to give your final thoughts, and we'll start with Patrick Keen.
So I want to thank our host tonight, because it's hard to get out and introduce yourselves to the community. I've been at this for four years on council, but I still feel like most residents go about their business, and hopefully the right people are running the city, and they don't follow it very closely, except at election time. I came to Minnesota 44 years ago to go to school and then got a job up here, one of the best moves I think I've made. Rochester's been a great community. I bought my home in 1985. I've lived in the same home since. My wife and I, Lori, we've raised three kids, and they're off-living in Minnesota, doing their own things, taking responsibility for themselves and others. We feel like we've really been blessed here. I feel like part of my draw towards city and city council and representation is service and give back. And I think I'm here for the right motives, with the right background, and I hope to continue to serve Ward One going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Dan Zapita.
So, this is just a final comment.
Final, final.
So, yeah, you know, why am I doing this? I'm doing this because I would like to serve the city. I have spent 25 years serving people. I moved into another job in which I served people, and I would like to continue doing that on a grander level, serving on the city council. I think that I have a lot to offer in terms of my own background and in terms of the work that I have done in the past. And, you know, I would just like to make better connections between government and the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And then... Thank you. And then Andy Hemingway.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone, Sylvia and everyone else that helped put this on, first of all. And then, like, I was born, not born, but I spent the better part of 40 years of my life in the same neighborhood, Meadow Parks. I grew up there, I ran the streets, I went to Mayo High School and Willow Creek and Ben Franklin, and my daughter is currently a student at Ben Franklin. I want to see her have the same experience I did growing up in this town, and I love the people. It's a great place, no matter what anybody says about the crime issues. The crimes might be worse, but the numbers haven't changed over the years. I believe the city is doing, adopted the IAPP standard, the International Association of Public Participation, where I want, you know, the community should talk, the council's here for the people, so, you know, communicate with them, they're your neighbors. The phone, Facebook, email, we have the, we get it, we can respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidates, thank you for your time tonight. On behalf of ABC6 News and Post Bulletin and 125 Live, thank you for joining us for this year's debate. We will have another one next Tuesday right here at 125 Live. So thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.